Library meeting this Thursday, October 24 for the Library Board of Trustees. If capable, would you please stand and say the pledge of allegiance?
I'm gonna stand now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll ask that the roll be called by our Secretary Kent Dooley.
Trustee Bartlett.
Here.
Trustee Crawford.
Here.
Trustee Dooley's here. Trustee Gualapu.
Here.
Trustee Helvengus.
Here.
Trustee Stirring.
Here.
Trustee Burke is absent and excused. Student Representatives DeMore.
Here.
And Student Representative DeWadbala.
Here.
All right.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of our agenda, we have the agenda in front of us. Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded to approve our agenda. Any discussion? Are none? Please call the vote.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Helvengus?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
And Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the approval of the minutes of the September 26, 2024 Regular Board Meeting and the approval of all the claims and warrants for accounts 271 and 272, more particularly described in pages 13 through 15. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to support. Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Support.
Oh, I didn't hear where, but okay.
Okay.
It's been moved and supported to approve our consent agenda. Any discussion? If not, you call the vote.
Okay. Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Helvengus?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. We're honored tonight to have the presentation by the Michigan State Federal Credit Union, Ian Dunkinson, and I'll let Julie make a few more comments. A better introduction than that.
So I'm gonna actually welcome Ian up if you will join me. Very excited because if you don't know, MSU Federal Credit Union has moved into Novi and they had their grand opening just a couple weeks ago in October. President Stirring and I, we were very honored to attend the grand opening and welcome their new bank into our community. Go green. I got to say that a lot.
Go white.
I got to say that a lot that night. It was very exciting and I wore green and white, which I wore green tonight too. I'm very proud. But Ian had reached out to us as they were getting ready to open up their new location. They were looking to give back to the community and they chose the Novi Public Library, which I cannot be more excited about. If you look in your packet tonight, you will see a number of different items that MSU approved and was very excited to support for the library over the next year. We have some programming that they will participate in and sponsor. We have some new artwork that we're working on, which I'll describe a little bit of what it is. If you've had an opportunity to go into the Novi High School or some of their elementary schools, they have actually taken the languages that are spoken in our Novi community, which there's just over 40 languages spoken now in Novi, and they took the word welcome and put it in the native language. And those are in the schools. Well, we wanted to do something similar at the library. So with MSU's support, as you walk in, just above, we have three sections of glass as you come into the building, and that's actually going to have artwork on it that will say welcome in those 40-plus languages. As you leave the library and enter out on the opposite side, it'll be the word read in those languages as well. So we're very excited to bring that to the library, along with supporting the Maker Space and Song Fest, which has been a huge, huge event for us in the summer. So we are very, very excited to be working with them over the next year. And truly, I am honored that it is my alma mater, but it's a connection with their new business here, which I hope will be amazing. And if you need an account, I'll help Ian by telling you all to get one. But it'll be great to see the green and white in our location and in Novi. I know that they have a lot of alumni that are in the area and they might not be serving them yet. Also, I'm understanding that they have a Brighton location that's also coming as well. And so I think it's wonderful to see this, you know, their organization moving into our community and being a part of Novi. Ian, do you want to say anything?
Sure. Okay. Yeah, I just wanna, I'm so excited to be here. We're super thrilled to be joining the Novi community. I went to Michigan State, where I started working at the credit union right after graduation, but I actually grew up here in southeast Michigan. I'm from Rochester and Clarkston and currently live in Madison Heights. Novi has always been right in my backyard. I drive through Novi every time I have to go to East Lansing for our headquarters. And then, as Julie mentioned, we are getting ready to open our Brighton location in January of next year. So I'm thrilled that we're expanding our resources and our footprint in this area, not just because of the members that we can welcome into the credit union, as well as serving existing members, but also because we are truly committed to giving back to the community. And this is just one demonstration of that here in Novi, where I'm so excited about all of the things that Julie was able to put together for us to partner on and for us to be able to live that out. I do welcome you to join the credit union. Although we are very proud of our MSU heritage, we are not exclusively for MSU fans. We do have an Oakland University Credit Union branding for those U of M fans who might not want Sparty or MSU on their creditor debit card, but everyone in the state of Michigan is welcome for consumer and business accounts and services, investment services, anything that you could want from a financial institution that's truly rooted in the communities where we operate. So, thank you.
Any questions for Ian?
Well, just a couple comments in terms, I had the pleasure of being at your grand opening, had a chance to talk to a number of the people in your organization, and just a very good community feel. I mean, it really felt warm and we know that you're very involved. Ironically, two or three days later, I was in Traverse City, you know, I was at the City Opera House. And MSU Credit Union that sponsored that event for interlock and to have some of their students play at the, so you really are a community organization and you're very involved in the community. We're welcoming you into Novi. Thank you very much for the $10,000 donation, but you're a good fit. I like what you did to the building. I mean, you improved the building. I knew it before because of idality was there. It just looks so much more open and lighted and stuff like that. Welcome to the community and from the library. Thank you very much.
The other thing I want to mention is another benefactor was the MSU Tollgate. They also received $10,000 that day, and we do a lot with MSU Tollgate. So it's really great to see, you know, us as partners already, you know, the commitment we've had to each other in doing the programming and then to be able to connect with the credit union as well. So Ian, we're very excited to be working with you. You know that there's lots of things that you'll be showing up, either you or your team, to support us throughout the year, so we look forward to that. So thank you.
Yeah, it's my pleasure. I will just add, in addition to our donations for the community, we do free financial education workshops. So there's a seminar series that whether you're a member or not, you're welcome to join. Many of those are virtual in the spirit of education, which I know is important to the library as well. Anyone can check that out on our website, msufu.org, and then scroll down to seminars and events. They're free, open, they cover everything you could imagine, financial related, so.
And Ian and I actually talked about how to bring some of that into our teen space as well. So we'll be doing that for our high school students and hopefully giving them a little bit of education and information about finances as they're, you know, preparing for college or leaving onto that next step after high school. So we're very excited.
Questions for the board?
Any other questions? We'd like to get a photo, if you don't mind. Mark, will you join us?
Sure.
Okay. Ian, do you want to take a photo of the board? Great. Thank you. We can. We can center it. Do you want to get everybody in? We can. You tell us.
I'm okay.
Get everybody?
I think I have to.
Should I go? Yeah. I don't know. It's photogenic. Yeah. Yeah, these lights.
That's a glare. We can do one more of our results. Just in case. Just in case. And we'll switch sides, Mark. We'll really make it here. There we go.
That shows up good.
Yeah. Thank you again, Ian. We really do appreciate you. We will be keeping this and putting this up.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on, our agenda, next item is public comment. In order to hear all the citizens' comments at a reasonable hour, the Library Board requests that the speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer session, however, is an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the Library Board. Citizens must state their first, last name and address. Anybody from the public want to make comments? I see nobody rushing up, so we will move on to our reports. First of all, student representative report.
For the September, wait, I'll just take off my mask. For the September tween and teen library programs, we hosted Club Half-Blood on September 5th. This event was for all fans of Greek mythology, monsters and mayhem. Those loving Percy Jackson joined our monthly club for book talks, snacks, games, and crafts inspired by the books. Attendance was nine for this event. The No Required Reading Book Club program was held on September 12th. Taking a break from reading for school, this book club is just for teens. Each month, we will pick a new book to read and then come together to discuss our thoughts and feelings about this book. Attendance for this event was two. The Novi Chess Club program was held on September 12th and September 9th. This event provides an opportunity for tweens and teens to participate in games, learn in chess, and sharpen their skills. Attendance was 22 and 19 respectively. The Tween STEM Grab and Go Kit program was held on September 20th. Patrons stopped by the library beginning at 10:00 a.m. to pick up a Tween Grab and Go Kit. Kits were available on a first come, first served basis while supplies lasted. There is a limit of one kit per child. Attendance was 96 for this event. The personalized keychains program was held on September 24th. Patrons created cool personalized keychains for their backpack, purse, or keys. Attendance was 32. The Teen Space update for September 2024 was that there were 993 patrons total who visited Teen Space. The weekly stats for Teen Space for September were, September 3rd through September 6th was 229 attendees. September 9th through September 13th was 265 attendees. September 16th through September 19th was 193 attendees. September 23rd through September 27th was 250 attendees. And September 30th saw 56 attendees. Teen Space was not in session for the following dates, September 2nd for Labor Day weekend, and September 20th due to low staff. There is a group of four Information Services Department staff, including Anna, Austin, Taylor, and Lindsay, who work on a rotating schedule in Teen Space.
The first TAB meeting of the year was held on September 20th. This was an introductory meeting for new and returning members. Officers started by introducing themselves and explaining what TAB is all about. The group then moved on to a fun icebreaker. Members filed into two lines and shared their favorite fall activities and other fun facts about themselves. Next, members moved into a discussion about community service projects and activities to plan for the year. Finally, the members discussed more ways to interact with teens to increase overall membership and attendance. Our attendance for this event was five, but as we see in many years, the first meeting's always kind of lower, just as we kind of get out and advertise it a little more. As for upcoming programs, Teen Space will be held daily, Monday through Friday, for grades seven through 12. Club Half-Blood for grades four through eight will be held on November 7th from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Novi Chess Club will be held on November 7th and November 14th, 7 to 8 p.m. Craftastic Wednesday, felted wool pom-pom for ages 16 and up will be held on November 13th from 7 to 8:30 p.m. The No Required Reading Book Club for grades nine through 12 will be held on November 14th from 4 to 5 p.m. The Tween Fall Grab and Go Kit for grades four through eight will be held on November 15th, available starting at 10:00 a.m. Again, a limit of one kit per child while supplies last. The Teen Advisory Board meeting will be held on November 15th from 3:30 to 4:30 p.m. for high schoolers. And the Community Read Author Visit will be held on November 19th from 7 to 8:30 p.m. Finally, the Silly Face Stimes for grades four through eight will be held on November 20th from 7 to 8:00 p.m. And our teen staff featured despite for the month, featured cool for school books because of the school season.
Thank you. Thank you. Always these activities just amaze me. The great things that you're doing.
And great numbers.
It's so wonderful, it is. It's great. Any board members have questions or comments to our two wonderful teen representatives?
Just kudos. All the hard work. Appreciate it.
Julie?
I'd just like to add a couple things. One, I want to bring your attention to Teen Space and the numbers just for the first month of September. As you can see, over 900. We are getting a wonderful attendance from our teens coming over after school, which is great. We increased the amount of students that could be in Teen Space up to, close to 72. And then, our new teen area is finally completed. The door was installed yesterday and the furniture has been placed. The last thing to look at is some artwork that might go on the walls, but I'm looking for the TAB to help with maybe some ideas and some things, because we want it to be genuine for the students and pick things that will be of interest to them. So we'll be working with them on that. But if you get a chance, please stop by and see the space. That now has almost tripled, so we're close to, well, we're over 30 spaces now in there that students have. We're seeing them utilize the space. There's different, you know, types of chairs, tables, studying, and also leisure, you know, seating as well, so I think they're enjoying the space. I haven't had a chance, but what did the two of you think? Have you had a chance to see it?
I was there for the last TAB meeting.
You were?
And yes, we did discuss a lot about kind of developments for the area. And I think it's very, very nice.
Great.
It's like, the other thing is, because all the books are out the windows, make it seem very open and bright.
It does. I know. It feels like such a big space now. And yet, here, just by moving, you know, the materials just outside the room. But yeah, a lot of space for you to, they, the students like to be in groups, you know, they like to meet up in two to three, on four people, sometimes even larger, and that can accommodate it, which is great. So, great. I look forward to hearing ideas from the two of you in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, we'll move on to the president's report. Couple things that I can report on. In addition to having the opportunity to attend the grand opening for the MSU Federal Credit Union, which was a wonderful event, and we thank them again for their generous $10,000 donation to the library, and they also made a $10,000 donation to MSU Tollgate. But they really are going to be a community-involved business, and it's nice to see, just talking to the people there, reaching out, I think they'll be involved. I think they'll have their employees be involved and stuff like that, so that was great. And then, I had the honor of attending a dinner with the staffs that were awarded and nominated by their peers and by management for their outstanding performance. We had dinner together, and that was wonderful, at least for me, to get to meet some of these staff on a closer basis and a first-name basis and stuff like that. But they're shining and they're doing a great job for our library. I mean, I can, just talking to them, you can feel they're enthused and they love it and they're making, they're helping to make our library as great as it is. So that was wonderful. And the sad news, for those of you who haven't heard, Terry Markwalles passed away this morning. And Terry was a wonderful person. She recruited me to come to the library at one time. She was a member of council. She was a member of this library board. She was president of the library board for a number of years, and her and her husband gave a large donation to the library years ago. We will miss Terry, because she really supported this library, and a true front has been lost today. Let's remember Terry Markwalles.
Thank you, Mark.
With that, move to the treasurer's report, which will hopefully be better news.
One other, just one other event that I wanted to point out is the Library Open House.
Yes.
Where essentially, essentially, I didn't realize it, but Lori Burke and I were the attendance keepers by being the ones that handed out the donuts. So we did have a very, we did have a very large attendance and we were very, very busy. I just wanted to point that out.
And I'm sorry, I jumped ahead to your report in case anybody else had anything to mention during the month. I jumped ahead a little bit. Does anybody else have anything to do with the library that you want to talk about now before we go to the treasurer's?
I would just second what Brian said at the open house. I was really pleasantly surprised. I didn't know we'd have as many people, but we were busy the whole time, from 2:00 to 4:00. It was great.
We will make that a regular event annually, and with the calendar, you know, now that we've approved our board meeting dates, I will actually look for a date too to put that on the city calendar as well, so people have lots of notice.
In regard to that, I had a number of people that came up and were very thankful and appreciative of the board being so involved.
Thank you.
You know, and not only that event, but in other events, they said, it's very noticeable that your board's involved.
You are a very involved board. I want to thank you for that, truly. You are showing up. Each of you take different programs and different events to be at, and I think that says a lot, and it says a lot for your commitment to the library as well. I've not always had that, and I do appreciate all of you being involved and, you know, taking the time out of busy schedules, I understand, to be at an evening or a morning or different events. Or if I reach out and say, will you join me at something, usually I can get one of you to join me, and I do appreciate that. I do think it sends a wonderful, positive message.
Actually, I also went to open house. One of my friends, she was very shy to go, and she said, oh, library is just for reading. I said, no. Books, it's all about books. She said, no, no, you can also learn the stuff there. So I took her and I showed her. She was surprised, really surprised. Oh, in the library we have all these things? She wanted to learn some knitting work. It's there.
Well, and we have a knitting group.
Go ahead and schedule. You'll get to know.
Yes.
So she did.
Great.
It's really good.
Kathy?
Just one thing I wanted to point out, that I think the last trip, the Saginaw trip, and Brian, I know, was Kathy Crawford during that trip. I took my place because I couldn't go for sure. So I appreciate that, and I know that everybody had a great time on that trip. They were really surprised at all the things that were in Saginaw, including their library and their, you know, a lot of, their castle, the castle is the library, right? Or the city?
The castle's right next door. The castle's right next door to the main library. Hoyt Library is right next door to it, so it's kind of on the same campus.
Yeah.
So, it kind of moves into the historical museum.
And the other thing, the Historical Commission has been very busy this past month. They've been at the open house, they've been doing a lot of things, and one of the things for sure is they, on a Saturday, they were at Tollgate Farms for Pumpkin Fest. So we didn't do it last year, but this year we were asked to come back again and do that. So we had, we had a display, and we had people there that were going to be passing out things. So they've been very busy this month, and there was a program last night that was well-attended, also at the library. The Historical Commission put on a program, Haunts of Michigan.
Right.
So that was very well-attended, and there's another one coming up in November, and that'll be the last one for the winter, I think. Yeah. So just wanted to let you know, the Historical Commission has been busy. And we do have an intern now that's been working and helping. Actually, Ray Manella has been giving, you know, working closely with our intern that's been in the office. So she's been doing a lot for us, for the Historical Commission, and we are expecting some new equipment soon.
Yes.
Which we will all be trained on. And I don't know, Julie, do you know much about that piece of equipment? I wasn't there when they demonstrated it, so I don't know.
I don't, but it'll be here, well, two payments for November and December, and then it'll be here. There'll be training, and then we'll make sure, you know, that everything is working properly. It's some new scanning equipment.
Yeah, because Julie and I went on a little road trip to Canada. We were surprised at how the public was using the MicroFish and, you know, some of the equipment that they had in the library, and ours was broken. So no one could come in and use it. No one could look up newspaper articles. No one could do that. So we have new equipment coming in, so the public will be able, after we're trained on it, then the public can come and make use of that equipment all the time, and it's great for looking up all kinds of things.
And if I can add to Kathy's comments, I actually invited the Historical Commission, so Ray will be here at the November meeting, to give you a little recap of last year, but what also they're working on for this year as well. I think it's important for them, as, you know, we're liaisons and connected to them. I know that, and I do appreciate city council, they do support the Historical Commission. We want to give them a little bit of opportunity to share what's going on, so that people know that they can capture history and they can do their genealogy work at the library. So, yep, they'll be here in November.
Great. Yeah. That's it.
Anybody else? And now to the treasurer's.
Well, if you look at your, the treasurer's report, the finances from the city, the audited finances are finally finished. So that's, so if you have any questions regarding 2023 to 2024, it is being put to bed, so that's, this is the last time you'll see those numbers, other than on our wide spreadsheets. Then everything else, no real outstanding expenditures, other than the firewall that we're going to be discussing today. So everything else is going well.
And to add to your comments, trustee Bartlett, Dina Van Oost, who is our communications manager, she is working on the annual report now that we have those final numbers, and she will also present in November to all of you, the, you know, recap of '23-'24, and then we'll be able to go to council in December and present it to city council. So you will see all of that next month.
Any questions for our treasurer? Moving on to the director's report. Director Parks.
Okay. We have our anniversaries for November. Bill Bebenek is celebrating 24 years. He is with our facilities team. He has been amazing for many years. He helps out so much at programs. I'm sure you have seen Bill over the years, always, we have a great facilities team, actually. All three guys are very helpful and very accommodating, but Bill has been a longtime employee, so we congratulate him. I'm going to be celebrating 17 in November. I can't believe it. Right? Same age as my youngest kid. It's like, wow, we both have a milestone. But it has been wonderful, and I truly appreciate the support over the years from this wonderful board. We have great employees, we have a great staff, and I think with the new strategic plan, we're going to be doing some great things over the next five years, so thank you for this opportunity. Lisa Wrinkle, eight years, and she is in our Support Services Department with Technical Services specifically, so congratulations to her. Josefa Casas, Casas Valeska, two years, Information Services. Josefa was actually, started with the library as our building monitor and has now moved into a different position as a Technology Assistant on the second floor. She's helping after school and with patrons that have IT and technology needs from the floor, so very helpful to our Information Services Department. And then Mallory Lindeman is celebrating one year. Mallory actually started as a shelve, and now she is with our Information Technology Team. She is one of our assistants in the iCube, so she recently took a promotion, so we're very excited. She has a lot of creativity, brings a lot of experience, so we're excited to have her. Josefa was actually, started with the library as our building monitor and has now moved into a different position as a technology assistant on the second floor. She's helping after school and with patrons that have IT and technology needs from the floor. So very helpful to our Information Services Department. And then Mallory Lindeman is celebrating one year. Mallory actually started as a shelve and now she is with our information technology team. She is one of our assistants in the iCube. So she recently took a promotion. So we're very excited. She has a lot of creativity, brings a lot of experience. So we're excited to have her. She's just started her position. And then Sid Erickson, he is celebrating one year with Support Services and we're very excited to have him as well. He is one of our clerks in the Support Services, working directly with our customers and patrons every day. So congratulations to all of our November anniversaries. Management update, I wanted to let you know that I, I had given you this on page 33. I had given you these staff suggestions that came through and then our management team actually met. And if you look on page 32, there are six areas that the management team is actually going to be working on over the next year. These are from comments from the employees and how they could use more support or, you know, building communication better. So we're going to be working on those specifically for, for our team. And then moving along, I wanted to keep in the tutor.com. I think it's important, so I kept it one more month. Just to remind all of you, if you're looking for some elevator pitches, you can talk about tutor.com and how students can go online and actually interact with a tutor after school. So, and you see the hours of three to 11 every day. And great, great, great opportunities for getting tutor, tutor help if they need it in many subject areas. Page 35, we're getting ready for Chevy in the Hole, which is our author, our Community Reads author, Kelsey Ronan. It's her book. She is a new, a new author. This is her first book, also a teacher from the Gross Point area. So we're very excited to be hosting her. If you haven't registered, please do. I think she's going to give you a wonderful presentation and talk on the 19th of November. And then we're getting ready for vendors, looking for vendors for our big pop-up market, which will happen on December 7th. So if you're not a vendor, but you definitely want to do some shopping for the holidays, this will be a great time for you to stop by the library. This is being put together by a number of librarians and Gail Anderson as well. Emma DeCenso is also assisting and they are putting together the pop-up market for this year. So we've always had really great vendors in the past, really unique homemade things. So I think you'll enjoy it. And so I encourage you, if you're, if you missed or you're always looking for like craft type stuff, if you missed the craft show at the high school this year, didn't get a chance, this is another opportunity to catch some of that as well. Then we have our statistics that are following along with the different reports from our managers. There's also all of the, all of the statistics for all of our building use and our friends and Historical Commission. I also on page 65 stuck in the slides that were from the last meeting from the friends just so that we have a record and for you, if you needed it, just to show, you know, their, their amazing efforts over the last year. I'm happy to entertain any questions, if you have any.
Questions? Anybody? Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
This is the point in time when we have our second public comment period. I don't see anybody from the public that wants to speak, so we will move past the public comment. Next section on our agenda is the committee reports. I'm going to ask if any of the committees, their chairperson or other members want to mention anything specific from their committee that will not be discussed in the matters for the library board action. Any committee want to announce anything? I guess not. In which case, we will move directly to matters for library board action. The first item for board action is to approve the accommodations and accessibility policy. This is the second reading. It's on pages 68 through 71.
There are just a couple noted changes that I highlighted in yellow for you, for you from the last time that we met, from, from last meeting. We did have the opportunity for the DEI Board Committee to review it as well. And there was a question about the definition of housebroken, which we actually defined for you. I hope that's helpful. Yes, I, I agree with you. And we wanted to, you know, make sure that, we thought housebroken was the accurate word to use, but giving a definition for what it meant might be helpful. So thank you.
I would entertain a motion to approve the accommodations and accessibility policy on pages 68 through 71 in our handout.
I approve.
Move?
Move.
Anybody second?
Second.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the accommodations and accessibility policy? Kat, would you do the vote?
Yes. I'm like trying to remember who I left off. Trustee Galapu?
Yes.
Trustee Helvengus?
Yes.
Trustee Sturri?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Julie also says yes. Motion passes six zero.
Second item for board action is to approve the personal care room for nursing patrons. This is patrons. This has been revised. It's on page 73 to 74 in our handout.
And there were no changes from, I know this is, we're bringing it, but not very many changes, just some cleaning up of, of this policy. And then at the bottom, removing the for staff. We will actually be moving that to our HR policies. So we won't lose the language. You'll end up seeing us bring back a revision for you for HR. We wanted to keep public, public and, and staff separate.
That makes sense.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to approve the personal care room for nursing patrons on pages 73 to 74.
Motion to approve?
I support.
It's been moved. It's supported. Any discussion on the proposed policy or proposed revisions to the policy? No discussion. I'll ask our secretary to call the vote.
Trustee Helvengus?
Yes.
Trustee Sturri?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Julie says yes. And trustee Galapu?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Item three, to approve the purchase of a new firewall with vendor T L N, which is the library network in Novi, in the amount of $13,235.86 with a not to exceed amount of $15,000 for any incidentals and/or additional professional services charges at $80 per hour. The funds will be allocated out of the 272 contributed fund and it's described in page 76 through 78. Well, I want to, first of all, ask, ask for a motion to approve it and we'll get to the discussion. I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
So I move to approve it.
Support.
And it's been supported. It's been moved and supported. Time for discussion. I'll ask, Jita, if you want to talk about it.
Yes.
As our chair of our Buildings and Grounds and you know a lot about it.
On October 15th, we had a meeting. And in that meeting, we reviewed the, all the codes that were provided by different vendors, four different vendors. Basically, this is for upgrading our firewall. It's been almost six and a half years old, the firewall, and it's right time to upgrade it. It's in a high risk because, you know, if we don't upgrade, we can lose a lot of stuff. And, you know, we may not have the fire, the support and everything for almost like few days if it fails. So it's very high time to upgrade. And based on the prices and recommendation by Julie and its team, most Jeff, who is the IT department head, we are going with T L N, with, which is, the amount is $13,235.86, which will not exceed more than $15,000, like additional professional services charges, which are $80 per hour. I think it's high time to do it, to upgrade it. Any questions? Anything?
Any other discussion? I, I would, I would just add as a member of the Building and Grounds Committee, once again, I think our IT department gave us a very thorough presentation and understanding of us, especially for those of us who don't understand this very well, like me. But, but anyway, they did a very thorough job. They compared a lot of different vendors. And the existing system is kind of in that end of its life cycle where in it, we don't know of any reason it would break down, but on the other hand, it could break down. And nowadays in the firewall system, there are many additional things you get relative to malware that we don't currently have in our system. So I, I agree with Jita, strongly support this motion to purchase this firewall.
Yeah, I'd like to just call out Jeff Smith from our IT department. He did a great job pulling all of the, all the details, as you see, the different quotes, talking with different vendors. We've had successes with some of the vendors that are mentioned. The pricing that came in for the library network obviously was very good pricing. We've also had experience working with them, a very positive experience with our Wi-Fi installation that they did for us just a couple of years ago. So we feel very confident with them and the pricing came in very good.
Has T L N installed this in any sister libraries in the network? Any of our other?
I, I didn't ask that specifically. I know that they do a lot of work for other, other libraries. I mean, they're, they're a huge supporter of us from the network. So I can't imagine this not being an issue or a problem. I could find out and, and report back of libraries that have had a firewall installation by them if you would like me to.
I, I just like, I just like to find out, you know, how experienced they are. I, I, I'd still vote for it tonight, but I'd like to find out how many, you know, if there are other folks that they're, they're used to supporting it. You know, they'll have problem reports. They'll have all kinds of, of things like that regarding it.
I can definitely give you that information.
Actually, I did ask this question to Jeff. The same question, did they, you know, install it? He said yes.
Okay.
So.
And, and I do know they installed our Wi-Fi.
Our Wi-Fi.
Right.
Yes.
Which is different system, but they did install that.
But they did a fantastic job when they came out, very professional and the work was done very quickly and hardly any interruption to our daily work and the building at the time. They know our system very well. They've done a lot of work with us in the past with, actually, we had a problem a year ago where we lost some power and we had a couple of systems that were affected by it. And they actually came out and did the work to get us back up and running. So they are a go-to person that we will call when we need things, when, when we're in a bind when it comes to IT. So they do have a very robust and knowledgeable staff that has been doing this work before. I can definitely tell you that.
Plus they're close.
Yes, and they're right here in Novi, which is even better. Yes. But I, I'd be happy to find out for you. Yes.
I don't know if you had anything to add, Carla?
No, I, I think you guys covered it. I, I was really happy with the presentation and I liked the, the comments about how easy they are, are to work with and things like that. They're very accessible. I think that's all positive.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask the secretary to call the vote.
Trustee Sturri?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Julie says yes. Trustee Galapu?
Yes.
And trustee Helvengus?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
The fourth item for library board action is to approve the revision to the DEI statement with the inclusion of the definitions of what diversity, equity and inclusion mean for the Novi Public Library as set forth on page 80 of our handout.
Mark, did you want context or did you want motion before discussion? What would you like?
A motion, approved motion. Or no, approved.
Because I can give context before we do.
Yeah, why don't you give?
Okay.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. Let, let me, let me entertain, get it on the floor first.
Motion?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good.
I thought you were asking a word question. Now I understand.
Oh, no, no, no. Yep. Move to approve.
Okay.
Support.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the motion to revise the DEI statement. And at this point, it's appropriate for discussion.
Okay, great. So as chair of the, the board DI committee, myself and our fellow colleagues, trustee Helvengus and trustee Crawford, it's been a really long time coming. So the staff's actually worked on this. The library staff has worked on this for several months. Really what you see before you is just a couple of updates, the definition itself. It's more grammatical than anything. For example, guest is now patron. And plus, you know, what we really wanted to also show is instead of committing, which was the original intent when we first came out with DI, that we were committing to do the work, we are committed to do the work and we have done the work. And you would see some of that proof on page 81. This is something that's not only threaded in the strategic plan, but really it's threaded in the fabric and embedded in what the staff does every day. It is something that they're very passionate about in terms of making sure that all the patrons, whomever they are, that come through the doors, feel welcomed and feel like they're in a place that they belong and are able to access the information that, you know, they need to garner. One of the things I did want to point out outside of just a couple of the words and the definition that needed updating, and that's really what you're approving today more than anything else. But previously, we had a trustee that asked, you know, what would diversity, equity, inclusion specifically be defined as for NPL as an organization? And that was actually a very important question to ask. You know, we have had these discussions in the past as a board and the different ideations of the board. And, you know, we thought we covered it, but it was a really profound exercise to go through to make sure that we really think about our authenticity when it comes to this space and when it comes to this work for our organization and for the community. So I just wanted to commend the staff for all their hard work because they really did a lot of thinking. And it came back to trustee Helvengus, trustee Crawford and myself several times over because we would make comments and then send it back. And they're like, wait, 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 we have more to add. And so we were just like going back and forth for, for a while. And I just wanted to show my appreciation and appreciation for their patience as well. But that's basically the context of tonight. So if you have any questions, definitely let us know. But I wanted to give the floor to the other members of the committee. If you'd like to have anything else you'd want to add.
I think you've covered it.
Yeah.
I did?
Yeah, did a great job. Yeah.
But yeah, if anybody has questions, please let me know.
Not a question, but a comment. It, it just came to light recently. In terms of what ways has the NPL, it was worked towards equity. In a little discussion that I had with some of the members at the MSU Federal Credit Union was like, who can be a member of the library if you work in the city or, or if you're a resident? But you don't have to be a resident or you don't have to work in the city to use the things in-house, like the computers or reading and stuff like that. And you've given some of those examples, but it just, that discussion just came up a couple, a couple of weeks ago for me with some members from MSU. Because, you know, some of the people don't live in the community or they don't work in the community. But I said, you, there's still things to do in our library, even if you're not a resident or, or an employee.
Correct.
Yep.
And that highlighted that.
To me, that's the beauty of a public library. It's really the one org, it's the one entity that you can walk in in any state, any community, and know that you can walk in the door and use it. You might not be able to check out, but you can use the building. And I just think that's pretty amazing.
And, and definitely what we've been learning over the years, especially, I'm in my third term. So, you know, it's kind of something that I've learned with libraries is there really is specific nuances to every library in every community. There are some communities who have libraries in the United States that actually do help the unhoused because they have a big homeless population. Thankfully in Novi, that might not be the case for us as far as we know. But, you know, it's, it's, it's something that, you know, we really pored over as a committee and the staff really worked on because we really did want to be authentic to Novi and authentic to NPL when we were doing this work. But it is really interesting because every library, anywhere in the world even, you can walk in and you know that you have a place to be. But every one of them serves so differently at the same time. So it's really cool.
I would, if I could, say something. I would like to commend the staff in particular because about the time we thought we had one sentence all figured out, we would, we would agree on what it said and how we thought it would be clear to everyone what it meant.
Right.
And then it would go back to staff and they'd bring up something that we hadn't really thought about that much, you know? And so back to the drawing board with another thing. So I know it's taken a long time, but I feel like the staff and the committee together really did put a lot of thought into what the policy would be. And.
And it's not just that, it's the fact that they're working, they, they are working right with our community every day.
Every day.
They are the true pulse. I, I have no problem saying that I'm not every day right the pulse because I'm, I'm in the office and I'm doing other things, right? But they're at the service desks every day, interacting with our community. And I think that says a lot then because they want these words to be valuable to them so that they can use them in the right way and, and feel comfortable, which I appreciate because this did take some time and I do appreciate their patience because I wanted it to be, as you said, Kat, authentic. And I, and I do believe that they do. And what we'll do is we will roll it out now and discuss it. And then if they're. And then if there isn't, if it doesn't seem like it's not, the great thing about it is we work with it. We get their feedback and then I can bring it back if something doesn't seem to be, you know, working well. So I appreciate that as well and I appreciate that you are willing to listen and then look at other opportunities and ideas if it doesn't, however.
They are on the front lines.
They are on the front lines, yes. And every day, they're working every day with our community.
I think, and that goes for every committee that we have.
Yes.
I think as board members, we really have to remember they're the ones, they're our face to the community.
They are.
You know, we can sit at the board meetings and discuss things, but they are dealing with it every day.
Yeah.
And so I really appreciate everything that they did and I know the whole, the committee and the board appreciate all that they did. So please convey our thanks to them for all their diligence because they really did work hard.
It was a lot of diligence, yeah, for sure. And we had a lot of learning on our end too.
We did.
From the information that the staff provided.
Exactly.
So I think it was really great and I think we're really proud of what came out of it.
And I also want to, you know, there's a few other pages for you. I want to thank TLN, who is, you know, the Library Network, that's our consortium, and the Michigan Library Association. You know, they have also done this work and really taken the time to be, again, you know, very thoughtful. And so we were able to review that information and then to see how it worked for us at NPL. And I do see, and I've already mentioned this, we've actually, we've already had a conversation.
Right.
You will probably see this back again, only because as we implement the accessibility policy, we need to be thinking about that specifically and even potentially words that mean belonging. So, you know, more to come, but I appreciate that we are at this point. I really am. Thank you.
I mean, thank the committee and the staff for all the hard work. It's obvious that there was a lot of time and effort put into this and it's very much appreciated. I just have one question. I just, is really what we should be adopting on page eighty? Or should we be adopting on page eighty, eighty-one, and eighty-two? Is that just additional information?
It's just additional, yes.
Okay.
Page eighty.
It's just on page.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. We just, I wanted you to see some of the work that's come out of it already.
That was my thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely, thank you.
Without overlooking it.
We'll be able to update now our DEI page two as well with the, on our website with some of the information that goes along with this, so it's fantastic.
Yeah, it's kind of long overdue. We do need to update that.
Yes, we do. So thank you. Good work.
Any other discussion or comments, Brian?
Yes. Well, I hate to be the, I looked at this and my concern is that section area of how NPL defines diversity, equity, and inclusion. And my concern is, is all those items, they move towards actual policy rather than how we define these items. So like how we interact with the public, what we do. And it also includes each individual's needs. And I think, I think we should be setting some global standards for this is how we define equity. This is how things are good. This is how things are bad from our perspective. And I'd like to point out one thing that we did earlier today, the very first thing that we approved. We approved a policy and this is what the policy says. To request an accommodation, a patron must complete and submit an application for accommodation form to the library director at least fourteen days in advance of the date of accommodation. The reasonable accommodation may not be the accommodation that is requested. Now if I look at that statement and then I come here and I say, okay, equity says, making intentional efforts to provide necessary support as identified by each individual's needs. Who makes that decision? Does the individual make it? Because if the individual made it, that policy that we just approved may not make any sense. What we approved in this policy, the policy says, and what the policy says is everybody's going to be treated equal and we will make the accommodations available with the resources we have in the time we have to do it. But this policy says you're going to have the necessary support. Who defines that? And also we get into that every, what if this patron feels I haven't been listened to? We've said the patron feels heard and supported at every level of the organization. I think in this statement, we need to take the things at level eighty-one and define equity in terms of the library. Okay, all persons have an equal opportunity to, for, for attending events. All people have, we basically have an open and equal, an equal, in an equal library of, of, library books for language support, for opposite points of views, all those sorts of things. I think we should just stick to that rather than putting this essentially policy language in these statements and relating to policies. I also hearken back to my university right now is in the middle of a huge battle that's being, that is being handled by congressional people and by the Attorney General of the State of Michigan regarding recent protests, regarding what everybody says are rights to an area and essentially closed down libraries. We're talking about the Palestinian protests and so forth. The congressional folks are, you know, going after the Attorney General who supposedly arrested some people. And it's a, and it's a bruhah because different people have different needs, are talking about different rights. I think we should, rather than just saying, okay, we're going to identify what individuals need. I think we need to say inclusion means everybody's included, meaning we're going to make efforts that our handicap people are included, that all folks are included and so forth, and leave it at that rather than say that, okay, we're going to provide you that you're going to feel welcome at every, at every level of the organization. That's a real tall order these days. And I don't think that we should be able to just, I think we need to provide staff with definitions that say, here are the goals and objectives. So that when they take matters in, when they have matters and issues and say, I met this goal and objective. I mean, if I look at inclusion and I say, okay, my, my goal is that every patron feels that they're heard and they're respected in every level of the organization. What if two patrons are in conflict? Our, our staff is responsible now by this, by this policy to make everybody feel heard and feel welcome. I, I've got concerns for that, to be blunt. I think, I think we need to take away some of the action verbs of the folks and just say, this is what diversity. Diversity is the multiple languages we support. Diversity is the, the multiple folks that we have. Equity is making everybody, everybody equal regardless of race, regardless of sexual orientation, regardless of handicap, et cetera, et cetera. I think those are the definitions that need to be in here rather than what we have.
Yeah, we hear you. That isn't what equity means though. You're talking about equality. So equity has a different definition, which we have talked about at Daseum in the past. So it, it has everything to do with understanding that everybody does come to the table with different needs and different abilities, even different areas of neurodivergence. Like not everybody thinks the same, just like today. And it's not that the staff is committing to bend over backwards, but they are saying that they're going to make an intentional effort. And I think that that does cover it because it's not guaranteeing, but they are going to make an effort to respect. So equality and equity are two different things and I think maybe you're getting confused with that maybe. But I do hear what you're coming from.
I guess, I'm not, I don't think there's a confusion when I read a statement that's make intentional efforts to provide necessary support.
Yeah.
Right, efforts is, but efforts isn't a guarantee.
I as the individual, reading this, say, you're going to make necessary.
Efforts.
Efforts. Efforts. It doesn't guarantee that they're going to get everything they want. We're going to make efforts.
Don't I get to define what's necessary as the individual if I read that statement?
No, because this is for us and it's the organization's, therefore it's on us.
We're not going to publish this anywhere.
Sure we are, but it's, it's coming from what we will do, what we, what we as staff would do.
I, I would like to, I would like to give, I would like to have definitions that don't imply, that don't imply that we are going, that don't, one, either take the individual out of it.
But that's, but that's an important component about equity is the individual.
Then, then if the, if it's necessary to the individual, how do you separate those things? And if the, and if the individual has an equity request that is in conflict, conflict with someone else, how do you reconcile?
Can you give an example of that?
Can I give you an example of that?
We're just trying to visualize what you're saying.
We're talking about the Palestinian protests at the University of Michigan.
But this isn't, but that's about beliefs.
Give us something how it relate to the library.
They, they basically blocked the Harlan Hatcher Brad Library with their, with their protests and are claiming that they have a right to their First Amendment rights for, for public, for public speaking.
Okay.
Attorney General Nestle arrested some people and basically is saying that they're not allowed to do that. She is in a fight right now with congressional, with congressional representatives over that, over that battle.
I'm having a hard time understanding how that would equate to us.
If, if, if it happened outside of our doors, I mean, you know, our, our staff is going to be called on to make a decision. How do, how do I let people in? How do I let people out? All that sort of thing.
We, but we allow everyone in the building and we don't, we have a policy already that wouldn't allow someone to be protesting in the building. It has to be outside the building, which they have a right to do.
Okay.
Under the First Amendment.
Right, yeah. They can't block entrances. We already, we already have those things in place.
Yeah.
I mean, I just don't, I just don't want our staff in the middle of that, is what I'm saying.
Sure.
And by, and by talking about, you know, the patrons' rights in here and so forth, you put, you potentially put our staff in the middle of it.
Does it say patrons' rights? It doesn't.
It says the patron feels heard.
Well, we, I, I mean, I take calls all the time where someone will be giving me something and they're being heard.
That's an important thing. That's a positive thing, I guess.
Right.
I think I do know what you're trying to say. You're worried about resources getting.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about our, our staff being.
Overextended.
Overextended, as far as expectations go. I have a concern about, yeah, I have a concern about, you know, because.
I hear, I hear your, yeah, I totally hear your concerns.
So you're talking about if, if someone were to come in and ask for some extenuating circumstances to be, you know, to be met in order for them to feel included.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think, sorry.
I think that would be based on what we can provide or not.
No, this is a great discussion. This is a great discussion.
I understand.
I just think it's really important to note though, to hopefully help with your worry, that the staff wrote this. Do you understand that? So this is from the staff.
Right. I worked with the full staff and asked for comments.
This is the staff committing to this language, Brian. So if you're worried about them, this is that, this is their voice.
Again, when you say how NPL defines, I'd like to see it more confined to, you know.
We don't, we don't want to be too, you don't want to have it too confined though because we would be leaving some things out. I mean, that would make the definition go on forever if you want to list out everything.
And then I'd be afraid I would not hit on something that, yeah, we'd be called on.
Go ahead.
You know, I, I understand Brian's concern.
Yeah, absolutely.
That this reads to or can be interpreted to be like a guarantee of achieving the same results. Now, I personally think the words in the beginning of the sentence, and this is all one big sentence. It's, it starts with practices that allow and encourage, which are not words of guarantee of performance. Now personally, I think I would fine tune this language a tad to make it maybe even clearer it's not a guarantee by putting the word reasonable in front of the word practices.
Okay.
Implementing reasonable practices. Now that means if someone takes up the, they say, my individual needs are, you have to shut this down because it's not serving my individual needs. That wouldn't be reasonable in my opinion.
That's fair.
And I think the example that Brian you gave us, I mean, it's a good example. It's in the real world. It couldn't happen here as well as well. But I, I don't think the word's quite guaranteed that they would be allowed to do that. But I think if you put in the word reasonable in front of practices, it, it would make what are extreme unreasonable attempts not governed by it.
Do you want to offer that as a friendly amendment to the person?
Does that make you feel more comfortable, Brian, or still missing?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah.
I mean, I'm trying to address what's a very legitimate concern.
Right, that you worry, absolutely.
I might say.
It can happen.
Oh, it can happen, yeah. And I also like to see like something like assisting all patrons. I mean, how can we ensure that all patrons are going to feel?
Equal.
Equal or feel heard at all levels of the library. How do you do that? I mean, it's, you know, in spite of the fact, and again, you're, you're talking about situations where patrons may come in and have a opinion totally, you know, opposite of another patron.
Sure.
And.
Yeah, that's the real world.
I, I understand, but I, I mean, right now, I mean, there are, it's the real world that we can't take the responsibility.
I know what you're saying. So does reasonable in the equity portion, does that help kind of?
It helps.
Ease it a little bit? Because I think what you're saying also is, you know, the sense of engagement and belonging that's under inclusion and that covers that everybody should be treated accordingly. Does that help too or no?
May I buttress this a little bit, Mark?
Yeah, yeah.
What if we said implementing reasonable practices as interpreted by NPL that allow and encourage all patrons, blah, 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 blah? That the reasonable gets determined by NPL and it's, and it doesn't say guarantee, but just allow. Allow and encourage, which I, which I think gives the NPL the right to determine reasonable practices.
I see what that is.
Does that?
It helps.
Can you restate it, Mark?
I'll, I'll re-read. I'll read what I consider the definite. Implementing reasonable practices as interpreted by NPL that allow and encourage all patrons to access NPL's offerings, including materials, resources, and programmings by removing barriers and or making intentional efforts to provide necessary support as identified by each individual's needs.
Trustee Helvengus, what do you think about that structure?
I think if, if that's.
She's like the best.
If that satisfies, yeah, I mean, I think it sounds fine if that satisfies Brian's concern, I think, yeah.
Trustee Helvengus is like the best wordsmith.
Well, thank you for that.
She helps us with our grammar and everything because words matter.
Yes, very much so.
So Trustee Crawford, what do you think? I know you're noodling on it.
Yeah, I am. I mean, I don't like making these kind of changes at the board. You know, I like, I prefer to sort of think about it.
Yeah.
We, this can always come back.
I understand what you're saying, but you know, something about the word reasonable, even if we say as interpreted by NPL, reasonable is so nebulous.
Subjective, yeah.
I don't know. I just, I mean, I guess I would agree to the changes if it, if it's something that is going to hinder us moving forward with this, with this policy, but.
What if I took it back to the, based on the changes that were made this evening? What if I take it back to the staff and let them review it again?
I'd like for them to take a look at it.
Yeah, I mean, they, it's really about them because they're the ones that are on the front line and I, I hear what Trustee Bartlett's saying, but I just really want them to weigh in more than anything. I agree with that.
I would too. And I appreciate being able to ask them and get them involved. That's one of the things we're learning through the strategic plan is, you know, to get them to have a chance, you know, to provide some feedback, knowing that they are the ones that are on, on the front lines.
We want to do it right the first time if we can.
So is that, is that okay if we entertain that and I bring back?
What I would ask if the maker of the motion and the supporter of the motion are willing to withdraw your motion and your support so the matter could be tabled to go back to staff to be relooked at? I forget who made and supported the motion.
It's Kathy and Trustee Helvengus.
Okay, okay. Is that okay with the maker and supporter?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so there is no motion on the floor.
Wonderful.
It's tabled for. It's tabled for another meeting.
I'll bring it back to next meeting. I'll, I'll try to get it out. I'll meet with my DEI committee first, staff, and then I'll meet full, and then I'll send it out to full staff after we have an opportunity of a conversation.
Do we need another meeting for us on the committee or? Will you be okay?
I will be okay because I think I'll just bring, if there's any changes, I would bring anything back and let you noodle it from there.
Okay. And I know that I owe you a events marketing.
You are good, don't worry.
I'm sorry.
I was asking lots of meetings. There's a few of us that have to meet, so.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. I appreciate that.
No, good discussion.
I mean, I just got to say as a president, you know, it's nice when we can all, you know, we agree, we agree, we agree, but it's also nice when we disagree and we bring forward some valid points and the rest of us listen and, you know, you know, we didn't see that. Somehow we didn't read it that way. So that, that we can agree and disagree and still be very functional.
Absolutely. You can be. That's great. Thank you.
Not to see where we're at.
I think you're, you're on communication.
That was all the matters for library board action. Some communications, you want to mention that?
Yeah, just, I wanted to share, you know, we had, we had someone who had expressed some concern about video game playing, which we do have computers at the library and the voices getting a little louder, you know, in that area. I had the opportunity, which I thought was great, I was going back and forth with this particular patron and I happened to call her and she was in the building when I called her. Wonderful. So I'm like, can I come down and talk to you? And so I did. And so it allowed me to, you know, really see where, where her concerns were. And I explained to her, she was, she was tutoring her children in the youth area, which is really difficult to do because the first floor is very much an active floor. And we know that just from all the different types of activity. It was after school actually during the after school, high school time as well. So I gave her a number of options, which she was very happy with, you know, and let her know that, you know, if it were to be getting too loud, she definitely can be interacting with our librarians so that they also can intervene and, and try to calm down, you know, students that might be. But I did share with her that the time that she was tutoring was probably the worst time of the day.
Peak activity, yeah.
Yes. So I, I did make some recommendations. I mean, she most definitely, you know, can use study rooms if they're available. Those are very difficult sometimes to get. But the second floor, you know, I think people think that children can't be on the second floor. They can as long as they're with adults and it is a quieter floor, so they can be using that as well. But she was very pleased with the different ideas and plus I gave her an opportunity to connect with our librarians as well. So it was very good interaction. And I love when I can do that in person, you know, not back and forth in email or sometimes even phone calls are very helpful, but this was great. She was right in the building, so.
I want to just mention the supplemental information in terms of the schedule for 2025. I believe this schedule now reflects meeting generally on the second Thursday of the month with the exception of March next year.
Correct.
And if I read this correctly, they all will be in the council chambers?
They will be except for the March meeting.
Okay.
Which I think I noted, yep. The March meeting is at the library, but everything else now is in council.
Okay.
Which had we stayed, we would have been six meetings at the building and six meetings here. So I, I think this is a very good move. I appreciate that. And also I did include your two budget session dates for January. So we have.
It does say Thursday, Saturday.
Saturday, yes. Sorry, that should say Saturday, not Thursday. Saturday, January 18th and Thursday, February 6th. Those are the two budget session dates.
Okay.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that.
Okay, well, I know I slide through those sometimes and I miss them myself and I want everybody to say, hey, this is what we're committing to.
Yes, you are committed.
You should be committed.
Yeah, that's true too. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Me too, adjourned.
Does anybody second that?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn, we can do this by raising of the hand, all in favor of adjournment? Aye, aye, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.